Welcome, everyone. And is there anyone in the audience who has a comment on topic not on the agenda? I don't believe so. I think I've recognized everyone. Okay. Well, let's move on to the consent agenda. We received four more professional appointments today. So, the consent agenda will consist of the minutes of April 18th and the appointment of six positions. And Kim, do you have them?
I have a breakdown for our department. It's a parallel meeting.
Okay. So, I'll just say it out loud. Alexis Koch, music teacher at ADL, Dennis Hill, assistant principal, EHS. Mary Kate Spillane, first grade teacher at Essex Elementary. Christopher Welch, building trades at CTE. Kim Horton, four one year guidance position at Essex Elementary. And Kristy Soul, special educator at Founders School. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Well, let me ask first, does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Kim?
I don't.
Okay. So, we'll pull the minutes. So, let's just vote on each of these two things separately since we've only gotten one of each. So, let's vote on the six professional appointments first. Do I have a motion?
No.
Thanks, Liz. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same nay. And on the minutes, Keely?
It was noted in the minutes that I left the meeting at 7:55, which I did, but I came back like 10 minutes later, and that is not noted, so it appears as in not part of the meeting.
But then you left again, so it got very confusing for Kim, so I told her just to put you out.
Well, I left at 7:55 for 10 minutes.
Yeah.
And then I was back until 45 minutes or an hour later.
Yeah.
So, I think I participated in a lot of the meeting, and it would be...
Okay. So, what do you want to do? Just keep you in?
I can say, and returned at 8:05 or 8:10.
Yeah. Just put that Keely shall return at 8:05, and that somewhere later in the minutes.
Probably before the last vote, which I...
Yeah. It was because of the voting. It was kind of interesting having you there with all the votes. So, it was before executive session.
What time did we go into executive session?
It says 8:59. So, I was gone when you were doing the communications to the public. So, 8:50 perhaps?
So, let's say Keely left at 8:50. Okay.
Keely left at 8:50.
Right.
Right.
So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
No.
Thanks, Kim. Is there any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same nay. Thank you.
Did you want to amend the agenda?
Oh, gosh, Judy. My mind is a sieve. I should have done this first. I need to amend the agenda to add an action item to approve the People's United Bank for her, I should say it differently, for the creation of a payroll checking account and a credit card account at the People's United Bank for EWSD. So, can we just act on that now, so I won't forget it? Okay. So, this is just something, as a new school district, you have to set up new accounts. So, this is approving that, and then I think Marla and I will have to sign the resolution.
You don't have the microphone tonight. Are you hearing?
I do.
I don't think Kim's hearing.
I don't have the same microphone. I'm sorry. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the creation of a new payroll checking account and a new credit card account at the People's United Bank for the Essex Westford School District.
Mark, your name?
Thanks, Andre. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same nay. Okay. So, that's done. So, now, the biggest item on our agenda tonight, I would say, is a presentation on the response review for the situation that happened at Essex High School on April 13th? 12th? Oh, yeah. We voted on the 11th. Okay. On April 12th. So, Judy, I'll turn it over to you.
Is this going to work for us, girl? Okay. So, as many of you knew, we had a threat event that happened on April 12th, and I'm going to take you through the timeline of how the event unfolded. But before I do that, I first wanted to introduce, and here tonight with us is Chief LaRose from EPD, who's been a strong partner through this experience, along with Rob Evans, who's a safety liaison for the Agency of Education, who's also been supporting the work on this event. We also have both Bob Travers, principal and director of CTE, and Rob Erdin, high school principal, who just did an incredible job of working through students, working with staff to keep everyone safe.
So, Judy, if any of these folks are going to talk, do we want to get them at the table?
So, if you'd like to pull up a chair over here, we have some chairs, and we can add one more.
Thanks, Judy. I think...
Up to the table.
Yeah.
There you go. That way it can be heard. And you can't really go back there, because then it blocks, so come right up. Somebody could even sit next to us.
Come sit next to Mark. That'd be nice.
Well, that's better. You're not quite so far away.
All right. So, Mark is going to move to the beginning of this timeline. At 9:58, EPD received the threat. And what's significant about that is the threat went directly to EPD and didn't go through a 911 number, but the actual phone number. At 10:11, in that short amount of time, this entire facility was in complete lockdown, and everyone was in place. And the more we review this, the more I realize how incredible it is for about 2,000 people to be in place in that short amount of time. I notified the board chair, Brian Donahue, at 10:15. At 10:20, I notified principals to lock down their buildings, because at that time, what was reported to me was that there was someone who was armed headed to the high school, and the threat was that he was going to, the person was going to shoot people. So, we locked down the surrounding schools. And then at 10:30, we sent the first message to families. And if you click on that message, it'll tell you that we sent a message that said this is not a drill. So, from 9:58 to 10:30, this information went, 9:20, I mean, this information, no, that's not the right one. That's the PM. Okay. I'll just tell you. I don't know. But at any rate, the first message went out saying this is not a drill. It was really important that people heard that it was not a drill. Can we scroll back one?
Yeah, sorry. Very sensitive.
Thanks, Mark. And the response, I can't tell you how incredible it was that schools are a safe place because we drill. And this is where we teach students what to do in a case of emergency, and people did what they've practiced, and it paid off. After the lockdown, at 10:35, I contacted the EJ principals and notified them to move from lockdown to lockout. So, they were still locked out, but they were no longer in a lockdown situation. And at 12:10, law enforcement, the response from law enforcement was incredible. We had so many communities that came with, with all kinds of rescue opportunities. And at 12:10, law enforcement had completed its interior sweep of the facility, the first sweep. At 12:22, and this is where I made a mistake, so I'll confess, so I can still get to heaven, that I sent a second message to families saying that EHS CTE was moving from lockdown to lockout, and because the threat was not in the school any longer. But what had happened at that time, I got that message from the command center, but the law enforcement was having trouble, one with radio communications inside different parts of the building, and we as well were having communication troubles, which I've come to learn is sort of part of, every time there's an event like this, there typically are communication issues. So, what happened was, and the reason why I was anxious to send this out is because our students hadn't access to bathroom facilities for a long period of time, or our staff, and in some cases, water or anything to eat. And you know, high school kids, hungry. So, people started to move, and as we debriefed today, we learned more about, they were moving before officers had cleared the hallways. And so, people had the unfortunate experience of having armed people, having them go through the protocol of what police do when somebody's moving in that kind of an event. And for that, I am sorry for that fearful time, but as Rob Evans has taught me to say every time, nobody was hurt, and that means it was successful. So, at 12:50, they began with Rob at Command Center, working back here at the high school with an accountability planning for dismissal. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. Of course, you can drill and drill, and it never works, you know, the way you drill, because there's different circumstances that always present themselves. So, absent a COO, I was the only administrator at central office, because Paul O'Brien was locked down at Child Nutrition Services. He was meeting with Bob Clifford at the time in the cafeteria. And Aaron McGuire was locked down here with Kathy Quinn. So, all the administrators, and I had locked down the other schools, so Vince Gennillo was locked down over in ADL. So, we were all locked down. So, it made working and communicating a little bit challenging, but we certainly continued to work through it. And with the help of an incredible Child Nutrition Service program, they were able to provide lunches to classes. This is after most of the food that they had, cooking was burnt or dried. So, they did a great job of hydrating kids and providing some nutritional services. And then at 1:20, the decision was made for an early release at 2:05, at which time I quickly called Mark to ask him to please contact ET buses, so that they could help transport an early release. We also sent the third message out to families that EPD had cleared the exterior grounds and parking lot. Early dismissal was announced, at which time we also reported there were no injuries. At 2:05, the dismissal process begins, and it continued for over an hour. And both Rob and Bob can talk with you more about that. But they actually had taken the time to dismiss class by class, class by class, name by name, so we knew exactly who was dismissed. And we had those rosters afterwards, which was incredibly important. So, the attendance and whereabouts of all students, remarkable job by administration. It was also with the help of law enforcement that, as the students dismissed through the front lobby, so many of our students thanked the police and were so appreciative of their protection. So, it was quite remarkable. Then the next slide, Mark. At 3:30, EHS CTE facility was clear, of all students and staff, and law enforcement at that time began to prepare for their second sweep. At 4 o'clock, we all met for an after-action review at Essex Rescue with the emergency responders, law enforcement, administrators, and all EJ principals. We were there until 6 o'clock. A very kind person, I think a mother dropped pizza for us. So, you know, the community's response to this was just remarkable. We then went to EPD and located to work with Mike Wooton, a detective with EPD, who, again, I can't say enough about the work and decision-making that he had to go through during that period of time. So, we worked with him. And then at 9:10, we received word that the second sweep of EHS CTE was completed. Today, they talked about that included canines, it included several sweeps of the area. The law enforcement response, and they drill, they know what they're doing, and they came in, and they reported out, like some tin foil was found in a backpack and some cleats that was suspicious, but of all the things, that was it. So, that was great to hear that the second sweep was completed, and at 9:20, our fourth message went out to families. And Brad and I sat and made sure that when our releases went out, they went out together, so that the police report and statement went with the superintendent's statement, so people saw the facts and what happened in both circumstances. So, we were very united in our communication efforts. And then at 11:45 PM, the decision was made to open school. I hadn't finalized that decision. I appreciate, again, the efforts of everyone sitting in that room to help me make that decision, to have the students return the next day, which was a really good decision. It just took me a while to get there. On the next slide. This is what we...
Can I just say?
Yes.
I just wanted to also say that I, as families who have kids in Essex Town and in the CCSU, we also received notification from Mark Andrews and the town to alert families what was happening, and that was very much appreciated for the kids who were getting word of something happening here, for those families. So, I just wanted to include that in your timeline and appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah. When, with communication going on around us, it was really difficult to manage all of it, so I did appreciate Mark's sending that information. And also, we were in direct communication with Westford as well, because what we were experiencing with students is that they were sending text messages to their siblings and families. So, it grew quickly beyond our communication efforts and had a send, that was the other work that was happening in the background, sending information to principals, letting them know there was no threat in Westford, everything was fine there. And then some principals in the junction were struggling with families coming to pick up kids early. So, there were some pieces that were all happening in the background, but for the most part, I just kept the focus on the actual event for this presentation. So, this is what we practiced, and this changed this past year. And during leadership team meeting, we reviewed all of this information, and this poster is in every classroom in every school. And it's practiced, and each month, principals are required to do a drill. So, we have drilled on these different things. What we hadn't drilled is to move from a lockdown to a lockout, because we had never had such a prolonged lockdown before. So, that piece was something that we've learned a lot about and how to do it differently. But as we continue to practice these drills, last spring, we had relocation drills in all of our K-8 schools, and law enforcement came at that time, so we knew where our keys were, and our maps were updated. And again, this fall, the high school is such a large facility to evacuate, takes much planning. And Bob and Rob have been meeting with Tim Shea over in Champlain Valley Expo to look at that site as a possible relocation site. Chief was there as well, continuing to constantly keep safety on the forefront. So, on the next one, the next day after the event, guidance counselors, Mark Floyd, had contacted Howard Mental Health Center, and first call was notified. And so, those supports came to the school. They brought with them two therapy dogs. At the time, CTE had a preschool program in place, so there were preschool children involved, and they were very appreciative of those therapy dogs, Molly and Maple, as well as the staff. And the EHS and CTE both started their days off with staff meetings to provide the information and statements that were provided to the media and to families, so everybody had the same information. We certainly, they also met with students first thing and altered their schedules to meet in advisory, so the students met in small groups on the first day back and had an opportunity to debrief the event. And we've also been recommending the employee assistance program for employees who are also looking for additional support. There's probably many, many more, the teachers for supports. There were incredible supports all the way through families, parents, but those were some preliminary ones I wanted to mention. This was the number of agencies that responded. It was quite remarkable. Can't help but mention Lieutenant Bolio, who was dispatching four people teams to do both exterior and interior sweeps simultaneously. His ability to manage that was remarkable. And all of these folks were consulted in some way, shape, or form, or were on-site. Then on, after the April 12th, which is our first after-action debrief immediately following, we've taken notes on what went well and what areas to learn from and improve. On April 18th, EHS and CTE administrations, CCSU office, went through the after-action review, what went well. Certainly were very proud of the quickness of the lockdown, the response of students and staff and how they reacted. Received a lot of feedback that parents felt that their students were well cared for due to the alert messaging and the messages students were sending to their families, and the caring, nurturing circumstances or environment that our teachers and administrations were able to provide during that long period of lockdown. The way students left the building for dismissal, the next day reentry, there was just the right amount of police presence again, and students appreciated that. They're continuing, students are continuing to share their thoughts and reflections with us, and we'll be organizing those insights to help inform our next steps. And the administrators have reached out to teachers, staff, classes, and all the days that have followed the event. We work together as a team, a cohesive unit with law enforcement in a common orderly way. And then, what can be improved? And number one is always communications, the use of radios for both law enforcement and school personnel. We're looking into some of our dead spots to improve those areas. Protocols for the use of cell phones need to be explored. We found there were some benefits, but there are also some concerns, and we have to teach a protocol and think about how that technology can be usable, but at the same time, keep our kids safe in that environment, so they don't disclose their whereabouts. We need to create specific roles and designate people to fill those in the absence of key personnel. We have people who serve in roles, and when people aren't there, what's the next layer down and the next layer down? And then, what came to light, there was definitely some concerns for substitutes who were in the building, and so some substitute safety training, or what kind of documentation we've been talking about for safety protocols and lesson plans, so when substitutes go into a room, they know this is what we need to do in case of emergency in advance. Concern was, again, translation services for alert messages. We have so many families now that need to have those messages translated, and we didn't have that available at the immediacy of it, so to think about that. And then, we had students in bathrooms and staff in places that they couldn't hear the PA, so there's a need to upgrade our PA system, so we've learned about that. Is that the last one? So, what can be improved? So, during our first review, a key ring that had about 45 keys on it was put on the table, and that's how many keys there are to the different places in this building. So, Bruce Murdo is currently rekeying, so we have two keys. And those two keys will open every door, and places that didn't open are being explored, and locks are being put in to match that key set. Then those will have probably 20 copies of those keys, so the different people who need keys, because it's not just one person in a building or facility the size, you know, you had 20 teams of people going through, and to make keys accessible was key, no pun intended, and something that needed to be improved. So, we've already moved forward with that. There's a review of some of our lockdown spaces. Kids locked down immediately in the best place that they could and had available to them, but as we talked about it, there are some spaces that we should review and think about differently. We have security cameras, and had I had it on my phone at the time, I could have done a secondary check of hallways to make sure they're clear. I do have it on my phone now. Every camera in this entire district, I can call up at any time and see where people are. And so, every administrator now, both Bob and Rob, have had their phones, apps included in the administrative teams. So, now we have more eyes in places that we didn't have available to us immediately. We're looking to purchase some software. There's a grant, a safety grant through Bizbit. Last year, we used it to purchase VES, and this year, we're thinking about accessing it to purchase software for radio accessibility on our cell phones, so our cell phones can pick up the radio information. So our cell phones can pick up the radio information by an app that you press and you would know then you could get the radio information. We talked about creating a group of text message capabilities. So there were groups of people that you could be texting and so we have IT and Authenticy working on that group text messaging, using our alert system and also thinking about Google Hangout as a way to manage that. There was a need to clarify location of command center and staging area and we've talked a lot about that and identifying the unified command and the roles. And through the process today, I thought about the need to make sure that the new district organizational chart and the roles and responsibilities are shared with EPD and our emergency response people because, you know, they don't have a way of knowing how we're reorganizing. So as we're becoming one, it's really critical that those org charts are available to them, that they have all of the updated emergency phone numbers and all the new people that'll be in our district next year. So that's some work that we want to try and get in place as soon as possible. And then through the AOE again and Rob Evans' work, he shared that there's a communication class and training with public relations coordinator and EPD. There's an on-demand class that's two hours is a prerequisite and then eight people can participate in a two-day training so that we have the information we need to have in our messaging for families and parents. So I was going to turn it over to Chief LaRose for a minute to talk a little bit about the Public School Safety Committee that you run and also today's after-action review.
We do have a school safety committee made up of a multitude of stakeholders from all the emergency service agencies to Department of Health, Fairgrounds, fairly school officials and law enforcement. Just a long list of committee members. We meet once a month for most of the school year and the bulk of our discussions focus on safety. Now and again, we'll bring a guest speaker in to deliver some information, but most of the time, we are reviewing plans and conducting what we refer to as tabletop exercises. Those are very limited and what we experienced on the 12th and reviewed on and identified is, you know, we're pretty good responding to situations that we have planned for in practice and we're not so good with the elements that are tougher to anticipate and to plan for. A little quick example, I'm over at the rescue building at the command center and I'm wondering, okay, where is Rob? And where's Jeff Goodrich? And I find out later, you know, they're under lock and key. So, you know, we had to make an adjustment there. So we talked about coming up with a deeper plan for substitutes here. That's kind of like the separating the president and vice president, they're never together at the same time so they don't get locked up together. So today, we had a school safety committee meeting. I pushed it back a bit so we could have plenty of time to do just several debriefings of different sorts. Yesterday, all law enforcement involved had a debrief. They debreeced what school officials, school officials had and staff had debriefed. We brought it all together today and for an hour and a half, we hashed it out and think it was a very productive meeting. And when we plan for the future, plan for the new district, it's vitally important that we have a good core set of documents, be it maps, be it organizational plans, be it strategies, in place. So that when we come to the school safety committee meetings next fall, we can hit the ground running, start to organize and practice our revised plans. And I guess I'll just finish before I pass it over to Rob, that as the person ultimately responsible for public safety in this committee was very satisfied with the response, not just from law enforcement, we drill this in different ways all the time, but schools. The school folks did exactly really what was supposed to happen. The students were just outstanding. Staff was cool. There's going to be a little hiccup here or there along the way, like reuniting special needs teachers with aides to take care of kids. And we had preschoolers here well beyond release and we're just doing those things. But kudos to all the folks that have been working so diligently with for so many years and they've been working with us. It really came to fruition, you know, the other day. We'll be taking questions here in a couple of minutes, but regarding the investigation of the incident itself and who's responsible for this, I really can't get involved in that at this point. But I can tell you that it is an active investigation and this isn't over. It's very complicated and we're making progress. Let me just leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Mark, can you go back to the slide that showed the agencies that responded? And for those folks that don't know my role, so I work for the Agency of Education and Department of Public Safety and I do school safety liaison operations for all the public, private, and independent schools across the state. And my role is to try to enhance the level of emergency preparedness on a statewide basis. But if you look at, what's interesting is I reflect on the slide there of the agencies that responded, you know, this month. Same agencies that in August of 2006 responded to the Essex Elementary School as well. So this practicing, planning, training, and exercising has been taking place for years. And I got to tell you, and it's not just because we're sitting here amongst friends, it doesn't look like this in other places of the state. And you folks are very, very, very fortunate to have the first response organizations that you have as well as the leadership that is in place to dial it in and get things done as far as school safety and school emergency preparedness. And it all starts and ends with leadership and vision and folks here have it. It's been a priority for years. This incident, the South Burlington High School incident, aren't going to look the same because they're different situations, there are different threats, there are different response capacities. So just because it looked one way at Essex High School does not mean that folks did it right, did it wrong at South Burlington. Each one of these has to be evaluated and reflected upon based upon the individual circumstances and facts and circumstances that lead us to those calls. It also doesn't happen here if folks haven't gone through an aggressive planning, training, and exercise program that folks have done here for years. I was invited in, you know, within the last 12 months to do school safety assessments in the town, participated in the exercises. Folks are inviting folks in, not only to evaluate from the inside, but to evaluate from the outside. And it's always tough to invite folks from the outside to come in and open up the doors and the closets and see what's there. So we had some tough conversations in some of those visits, but folks that want to have an open conversation about where folks are with emergency preparedness across the state. Since this time, my role is to try to share some of the best practices with what's been taking place over the last couple of weeks with those that we know it's coming down, you know, three months from now, six months from now, another one of these situations is going to take place. So we've had one conference call already with 131 principals and superintendents across the state where Essex High School folks from the PD and Judy and Rob and folks from South Burlington High School and the Vermont Intelligence Center from the State Police, where they are sharing kind of best response practices as well as public information sharing best practices and not only incidents that have happened here, but across the country because these types of SWAT incidents are not just isolated in the Green Mountain State, they're happening all across the country. So we're trying to get some lessons learned and sharing that with folks across the state. We're also having another one this Friday for those that were on school vacation during that one and couldn't participate. There's another one that's coming. And immediately following that, those same folks hopefully will be on a conference call with our local county and state law enforcement officers and executive leadership teams to discuss these types of things because it all comes down to the threat, the evaluation of the threat, the credibility of the threat and how we respond is based upon the evaluation of that process. And we just need to make sure that folks know what they're doing as far as the evaluation, that all the resources in the state are brought to bear, you know, to evaluate that threat. And then that's how the response goes based upon the credibility of that threat. Mental health preparedness, not only before, during, but also after the event. This is something that in your safety committee meetings, we have talked about and you have talked about, that pays huge dividends. Mark, as you know from your school system, that, you know, 11 years after the incident, folks are still dealing with the impact. They'll be dealing with this impact for years as well. So I applaud the resources that were brought in to make sure that after the incident, we're doing that community care-taking approach that we need to do as well. I would say I was on the tail end of this one, but intimately involved in the South Burlington incident and the Secretary of Education, the Commissioner of Public Safety, and the Governor's Office get it and they take it seriously. And, you know, it's, this isn't the number one priority for teachers and educators, you know, it's educating our kids, but a part of that, if they don't feel safe being where they are, they're not going to get the education. So it's important, we get it and from the state's perspective, we're trying to offer as many resources to make it easier for folks like Judy and Mark and others that are trying to just get by every day. So as I said before, when you think about the numbers of resources that flowed in here and the number of moving parts that took place that day, for nobody to come away with a turned ankle or a broken finger or whatever that is, it's amazing to me. I can't get my kids out of the house with a triple step in the morning getting ready to go to school, let alone what took place here, you know, in a six, 12, 14 hour period of time. So it really is pretty amazing. It's easy to Monday morning quarterback, as we said today, come sit in a seat when you're operationally involved with some of these things and you see the weight that folks bear with that. So it's, you know, my hat's off to folks, so.
So maybe Rob or Bob or something you want to add?
Well, I would just jump in and say that it's all about preparation. So it's all those monthly meetings for years and years and years where you establish relationships with all the folks there so that when you're thrust into a very tense situation, you know the people you're working with and, you know, being over at command center with all the agencies there and trying to hammer out a plan based on information that was, I thought it was very seamless. And, I mean, obviously the communication we had because you had to deal with all the elementary schools, I mean, your communication was excellent to calm fears and, you know, so I also would say the outside agencies coming in to look at a drill is also very helpful because we get blind spots because we're here all the day, all the days, all the time, see it. But to have someone from IBM or Global or PD or Rescue walk through and evaluate a drill can be very helpful. And I guess the last thing before I turn it over to Bob is we had a student upstairs who was by herself, she was doing a little work, makeup work. And this was shared with me towards the end of the day on the 12th. And one of the teachers who was in the adjacent room when this was all going down, eventually reconnected with this student when we went to lockout. And she went there and she goes, "Oh, are you all right?" And she very matter-of-factly said, "Yeah, I've seen what the teachers have done many times during the lockdown. I just did what they did, pulled the shade down, got away from eyesight, turned the lights out, and I just stayed quiet." So she, I mean, that was just great to hear. That was proof in the pudding that, yeah, the drills do work. So it's that collaborative, collective effort in preparation for the worst-case scenario. So it's good stuff.
Just repeating what Judy had said and others have said all along, we have amazing teachers and students and the teachers modeled fantastic behavior. They kept the students calm, they kept the students safe, and that's why the students reported to their families that they felt okay. The students, as Chief LaRose said and Judy said, did an amazing job. They really stepped up. I've appreciated and CTE has appreciated the after-action review that we went through, the opportunity to sit in on the statewide conversation. And the continued focus on things like this is really important because as Judy's pointed out, we did really well and we've learned a lot. It's a complex building. We have 50 students up the hill. So when we think about the building and we think about the campus, it really, it takes some time to work through how to keep everybody moving in the same direction. Same thing, we've got 14 families who drop off their preschoolers four days a week with us. And so caring for those kids, I have to say, especially to the students of the Childhood and Human Services Program, that the 17 and 18-year-old students who were locked down with four and five-year-old students, the amazing job that those young students did was amazing.
Just to wrap it up, I would say, you know, a hearty thank you to everyone involved in the event and certainly the community, the larger community, because so many of our schools received thank you notes from parents and flowers and it really was great. So, thank you.
I guess one last thing I would add, it was nice to see how many ex-Essex High School students are in various branches of law enforcement. It was really great to see a lot of young men who I remember very well as students in various capacities.
Helpful. Today, when VST, when the Vermont State Police were reporting out, he said, "Well, I know." And he was able to really help direct where people needed to be. So, yeah, that intimate connection.
And it was the first time he was ever in the building by himself.
That's right. That's right, you said that.
Paul Rappaport, right?
Yeah, it was great.
We can take questions to right the question.
So let me start by saying, I'm sure I speak for the whole board when I say, we can't thank all of you and all the people who work with you enough. I'm fortunate enough to have children who are grown and didn't have to experience what I know many of you must have been experiencing, having children here in the system. But I have to say, I felt like I would have been very confident had I been in that situation because I knew all the practicing that had been done. I got all the communications and that was really helpful. And I was really pleased, as someone who has a daughter who teaches in another school in Vermont, I was very pleased to hear you say that you're sharing lessons learned with other school districts because I think that's incredibly important in this day and age. So with that, I'll open it up. Marla, I saw you first.
I have a question in that...
You should probably try to use a microphone.
Turn to the mic.
These are the mics.
Which one is the?
Yeah. These are going to feed the TV.
So my question is, I'm an older person, not technology savvy, and I work with younger people. And they had what was going on on their computers all afternoon long. And something that bothered me, just because my husband's a hunter and I did hunter safety course with my son, is if there is a real shooter or someone here that's intent to harm you, I was shocked at the parents that try to call their kids on cell phones. I think the last thing, I think there's some education that needs to happen that's beyond the students. I think the worst thing parents can do is call on a cellphone when their kids have to be quiet. All they're doing is getting themselves upset, the kids more upset. So how do we go about educating the parents?
So, that's a great question. And there's an opportunity at the beginning of the year, the parent handbook and the student handbook that goes about for an education, that parents have a role and responsibility here, not only in prior to the event, but during the event. Some of the messaging that folks put out, it's not the time for parents to come to the school. It's the time for the parents to kind of wait until additional direction does take place. But there is an opportunity to educate families and parents and caretakers about what they're supposed to do and not do during an emergency. We'll share some of that over the summer. We'll share some of that over the summer, so that in those packets of information that go out to every family across the state, those will be some of the key points that we will bring up in that kind of parent education about emergency preparedness, about specific roles and responsibilities and that type of thing.
And probably why. I think if you explain why, you're still, there are still going to be parents, they're going to show up at the doorstep, and there are going to still be parents who use their cellphones. But I think for many, if they understand why it shouldn't be happening, they'll be more likely to be compliant. Patrick?
So obviously, respecting that you don't want to speak to an active investigation, I do know that swatting incidences can sometimes be marked by their repetition. Do you get a feel that this is kind of a one-and-done sort of thing, or are you anticipating that this may come up again in weeks, or, you know, next month? I'm just curious if you have a general feel for that, obviously not wanting to speak to specifics.
It'll continue. To some degree, at some point.
Yeah, I agree, and it may not be the same thing. It'll be different. What we do know is that those that do this type of thing learn from what's been done this time, and they'll change it up to get another type of consequence or response. You know, it's the old days of the white powder, and then it was the bomb threat, and then it's this. We have to be good at being flexible.
Just to speak a little bit to what Marla was saying, I think beyond even the packet, because not every parent reads the packet, if there were any way that we could invite parents to participate in a drill exercise, whether it's observing the leaders of the response team among the administration practicing something, or whether it's coming with their students to experience a drill. Because I know, I have worked as a sub, and there is the information posted on the door, but until you actually practice it, which I got to do, so I was like, "Oh, everybody in the building is going to be great, because they've done this." If you don't actually see it, then it's not as powerful as if you get to participate. I also have, like, little questions. Just making two master keys, is that best practice these days? Or when there's 20 copies of the two keys to get into the building, is there a chance that somebody who wishes to commit crimes gets hold of one of those keys and now has access to half of the building, rather than?
Well, I can't say that.
One forty-fifth.
I'm on right now. I took my badge off, but our badges open up, so most of the time, that's what administrators and teachers are using, so we don't usually use those keys typically. Those keys would be under lock and key, in a box that would be accessible to police. So they wouldn't be floating around, and if there ever was a key given to anyone, there would certainly be, over a time period, name and a process used to make sure that key is returned. But technically, that would be to our advantage to be able to get to where we need to be, and the keys would be closely monitored and not shared without a process or reason for sharing.
Did you have further questions?
I guess, does the lockdown, what happens if there's a student who has a need for a medication that's with the nurse, or if somebody does become injured? Is that all covered in the?
Well, usually, what would happen if there was a medical, because we talked about this, if there's a medical emergency, it would be a 911, and then through Incident Command, it would go up the chain as to how appropriate personnel would access the student in the location with an escort with law enforcement.
I figured that was probably covered, Ben.
That's a good question.
I guess I want to speak about the communication building I was working in. Quite a few parents, all of us started getting the text messages, and I think where the organization I worked, we've had similar practices, but everybody was very satisfied with the level of outgoing messages regarding what was going on. And I think it really went well notifying the parents, so I wanted to share that.
Thanks, that's great. Other comments or questions, Marla?
I had one other question when the girls had the computers up, the internet on. I was noticing how close parents were trying to get to the school. Is there a way of having a perimeter or something set up around and further away? I thought parents being over by the Essex Rescue was a little too close, personally. I would think that you would want to try to, you know, shut any outsiders off even sooner than there, but that was my opinion from watching it.
Yeah, we, in our debrief, we talked about those types of things, and it's pretty hazy the first few minutes. And we grabbed your cap for turf. If we had our druthers, yeah, we would have pushed that back further. 300 feet is just a number put out there as a recommendation. Like that, cover 300 feet, having the command post over here at Rescue, it's not, in retrospect, it's not the best place to have a command post. 145 Maple is. If this were to all happen again tomorrow, exactly the same, it would go down the same, except it would have the command post over at 145 Maple. We, that came out in our debrief pretty quick.
And I would assume that some way you could do roadblocks and shut off streets to the schools, so people aren't coming closer? Because I know from my husband hunting and doing those safety courses, I don't think people realize how far, if it was a shooter in there, the bullets go further than people realize.
Well, absolutely, miles.
Yeah.
Could go miles.
Yeah, so I just think if there was some way of doing roadblock off some way, way, you know, and I know everything's happening so fast, but I think if you can contain them, because I was disappointed seeing parents on cellphones and trying to get through to their kids.
The other complicator we had, as this unfolded in the beginning, was that was the same morning as the joint PHS/CTE Community Service Conference. So we had a lot of adult vendors in the gym, and many more in the parking lot, looking to try and enter. And of course, everything was unfolding, and we were, Chief was shutting down the entryways, which is what we wanted, and yet we wanted people who weren't supposed to be here but were outside to leave. There was just a lot going on in the first 10 minutes.
No, I think you did a great job, just looking at it on the screen, and the young people looking at it, just looking at it from a quarterback, what do you want to call it, from afterwards? It just seemed to me to make sense that somehow we would roadblock off.
Okay, so I've got Diane, and then Keely.
My comment is, as a board member who has no children in the school district, I had community members phoning me after they had gotten the text message from the faculty. So I think in the future, the all-board members should, I guess, be on the 911, whatever, search-out piece.
It's the alert system.
Alert search system.
Yeah, so I was getting it as a CCSU board member, but I, Kim pointed out, we weren't getting anything as EWSD board members, so that-
We talked about that today, not only, this happened during a time of transition, so you're the transition board, the new board, but we're still operational, SCCSU and Essex Town, so it was between us. So there's two superintendents still with very distinct responsibilities in schools to manage, and we were using a CCSU alert system. Some of the work that's happening right now in the background is that we're creating an EWSD alert system, so all of your addresses will be on that with all the students and all the parents. So this happened at a time when we're in transition as a district, and also the complexity of there's two administrations and two schools in this one facility, too. So that's another added complexity that we talked about today.
Keely, and then Kim.
Just thinking about the parents issue again, because that was the main thing I was thinking about in the days after. I hope that we can educate people to, I mean, if I were the parent of one of those preschoolers that you were talking about, I could definitely see why they might want to come. But I hope that, for the most part, we can get to a situation where the law enforcement can focus on the situation and not on keeping parents away from the situation through good information to parents before there's an issue.
Keely, can I just say that the idea of the cellphones being both a good thing and a bad thing comes up all the time? And Lisa McDonald, our preschool supervisor, had texted all of those parents and really assured them that their children were safe and being cared for. And I think you saw that in their response, and I think that they probably would have thought that where they were being told to post up was miles away from where their kids were. And so it's a balance that we really try to strike, and I really appreciate the response from the first responders, for police officers and fire responders to be the ones that walk the kids over to their parents was a really reassuring image for those parents, really class act.
Kim?
I was, a couple of things that, as a parent, I might be able to share, or Lee or Marla, that at least the big kids who are in the buildings have their phones on silence, so I don't think they were probably getting calls as much as, that ability to communicate with your kid via text was very reassuring. And the dead spots are real, because one of mine was not able to respond for quite some time, and that had, you know, a few of us a little worried. But nonetheless, as a board, I'm wondering if, just to make sure, in case anything happens before we're fully transitioned, that we have ourselves, I get messages from ETSD as a board member, the district-wide messages that go out, I just get. And I was getting these messages as a parent, and CCSU board members were getting them. So if we maybe add any of us not covered by those places, that they're already not getting it, to both district-wide message systems, that would at least cover us right now.
Which would only be Keely and Diane.
I get CCSU.
Oh, that's right, so it'd only be Diane.
But I think that there may be, I mean, if, God forbid, there were something that happened at Westford or at Essex Town, as board members, that sense of not knowing before somebody else knows. So whatever messages might be going out on emergency alert or on district-wide messages are, I think, beneficial, and it wouldn't be hard to put, even if I get it more than once, I won't be offended, because then I'll see it coming into my EWSD board email, and I'll just know that it's, I'm getting it as an FYI. So just so we're covered, and similarly, if Mark does that with ETSD.
And Keely, you getting it because you're a parent.
Yeah.
But if something was happening in Essex Town, you wouldn't get it, I wouldn't get it. Brendan? Oh, Al, you had your hand up.
Just a quick comment. On the communications difficulty with multi-agencies, basically, a lot of these folks are operating on different frequencies. Burlington, as I recall, had the same issue, and they had to invest, I believe it was a million-dollar communication system that enabled all supporting agencies to be able to coordinate with the fire department there. So that might be a source of where some information lies. Also, I was going to add one final comment. After Columbine, the U46 Board requested a security audit by a firm out of Chicago. And one of the issues for the high school, because it is so large, it's so open, and so many students, was access doors. There are so many access doors. So my question is, during, is a part of your drill process to test for ease of access into the building and to provide feedback to the administration?
When we drill, the, all doors should be locked.
But are we tested for that fact?
Well, in the respective areas that we have to cover during a drill, the answer would be yes, in some cases, in some of the drills. Yeah.
Sometimes during the drills, the administration chooses to lock down with, and other times we choose to walk around and assess. And so there are, CTE Main Office, there's a pole that locks out our back door, and oftentimes, when I'm walking around, that's one of the first places that I'll check to make sure that it does get locked.
Okay, good.
Brendan, you're good. Okay. And he's signed, questions or thoughts?
I just-
We are fortunate, indeed.
Let's not do this again.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You, Alan, thank you.
Some of the response.
No, I think this was helpful and very important, and a good thing to, and a good thing to get on public access TV, too, so that folks can access the information. All right, so moving on in the agenda, Diane has asked that we pull second reading of Policy Dean One. There was some confusion in what was sent out, and some of the edits didn't get in, and so I think it's best, I agree with Diane, that we do it at the next meeting when we all have the right copy to start with. So we will, though, do first reading of C20 and C21, Student Conduct and Discipline and Search and Seizure. Diane or Mark, did you want to say anything?
The recommendation from Paul is that we accept them as is. They're model policies, they have not been altered other than to adapt to our name. So from that instance, it's, you know, I suggest the board accept them as presented.
Would you like to make that motion?
So moved.
Andre?
One thing I have to ask regarding the student conduct and discipline piece was, prior to the Unified District coming into existence, we're on the verge, I was on the Policy Committee through CCSU, and I don't, during that time I was on there, I had made a suggestion not to separate some of the, how the discipline was being handled. And one of the things that I was pushing was that there is a caveat, whereas if you're an athlete and you're in violation of the infraction of school, your discipline is handled by Athletic Review Board, but if you're a non-athlete, it goes before the Assistant Principals. And I never heard further from that recommendation or not, and the reason, my rationale behind it was, the infraction is the same whether you're an athlete or non-athlete, so why should it be handled by a different body, based on the fact that you're on a team, and it's also placing the athletes on a different plane. So I know this is part of the procedures in the student handbook, but this is something that I was, uh, seeking- but this is something that I was seeking to have changed, so that the disciplinary matters would be handled by one body and there would be a better sense of transparency as well.
Well, I suggest, Andre, when Beth puts together procedure, that we have a discussion with her at that point in time as to this, because this is within the realm of the superintendent to write those procedures. So how's?
I understand that. But I also am.
I understand the two-tiered system that appears to be going on. I would only say from experience from being on U-46 is that student athletes are indeed held to a higher standard than the general student body for, at some points in time. Yes, my information's dated. I recognize that. I sincerely hope that is not the same now. But 20 years ago, it was. We'll forgive ourselves for that. So I would say let's pre- proactive, so that when the procedures comes up and Beth presents them, let's have that discussion then.
The other part to that as well is the search and seizure.
Could we discuss one policy at a time?
Oh, okay. All right.
Let's, okay. So there are a bunch of questions, so we'll move to the conduct and discipline first. Keely.
I think that what Andre says, if it's what's going on, sounds like something that we could express our intent in the policy about how the procedures should be written by adding the word equitably at a key point, such as to say in the early policy section, like, instead of "and are applied in compliance with due process requirements", "and are applied equitably in compliance with due process requirements", which would just signal that we want to make sure that all students see this policy the same way.
Well, without, without knowing what those due process requirements are and whether they already require you to treat students equitably. I guess I'm just hearkening back to Diane's comment that Paul would prefer that we not change this.
I have a real problem with including the paragraph about weapons in this policy when we have a whole policy on weapons. I think we, and that paragraph about weapons is completely incomprehensible. Like, try reading this sentence and understanding what it means.
Well, I also recognize that there's a sub-note dealing with that, that, which I don't have in front of me.
But we want parents to be able to understand this policy, and students. It says, "The guidelines for student behavior will also include prohibitions against the possession by students of knives, weapons, and dangerous instruments while at school, and shall allow disciplinary action up to and including expulsion for violations of the prohibition against knives, weapons, and dangerous instruments that are not possessed at school as part of an educational program sponsored or sanctioned by the school."
Keely, I asked Paul about this tedious task of that paragraph. And I had asked, could we remove that, okay, quite fairly, because it's redundant with another policy? And the note I got back was, please keep it as is. Thank you very much.
But "that are not possessed at school" could read three different ways. This is not an English sentence that can be construed always only one way. Therefore, it's really bad law. And if Paul O'Brien thinks that this is a good sentence to have in our policy, I respectfully disagree with him. We probably should either rewrite the sentence or say, "The guidelines for student behavior will include provisions about weapons that are to be found in Policy Number X, Y, and Z."
So I could make a suggestion to, I mean, Keely's, you know, given your background and skill set, you've been really valuable to helping us make this make sense. So as long as we don't change the substance of the, you know, the content of the policy and making it sound more accessible to parents and maybe even the staff, I would take a shot at it. And then try to find Paul making sure we haven't watered down the intent of the policy. I don't think there's any harm in that.
No.
I actually like the idea, I didn't like the idea of trying to rewrite that sentence to make it understandable. But I do like the idea of just referring to the policy that already exists. So if you could.
If Paul has a approved legal way to say, please reference another policy.
Yeah, I'm sure he can do that.
Sure.
Great.
Okay. So I've got Brendan.
Actually, I have a question coming up in the next.
Okay. Marla?
Before we try to change things, my understanding is this policy came through from the state's recommended policy. So wouldn't it be us to find out why they wrote it this way legally?
It's a good question.
I mean, there might be something there that we're not aware of as to why they did it, because I think that's why Paul's recommending that we don't change it. So I would say before we go about changing it, that we find out how the state.
I think it is a very difficult sentence. And I don't, I think Keely should make the suggestion and make sure Paul agrees that it's not changing the policy and go from there. What do people think?
Yes.
Sounds good.
The only thing I would suggest, Keely, because I pulled up the model policy, the model policy has definitions at the top. It is slightly different. And the model policy has footnotes to that paragraph at the bottom, which say.
The footnote leads me to believe that one, one way of reading that sentence is the correct way. But I think the sentence should just be clear without needing to read the.
The model policy has a footnote to that particular paragraph. And the language might not be, I would just say, as you're fixing it, take a look at the VSBA model. It's VTBSBA, I think, dot org.
I thought we were adopting this this way, because it was the model.
It's not exactly. The definitions that are at the top of that were pulled.
Yeah, the decision was to take, we talked about as a committee, it was redundant because those same definitions are, can be found in the weapons policy. So those definitions were scrubbed from.
Like weapons, school, expel, and knife definition parts. If there's other differences, I'm not, that I just picked up right away. So because the footnote in that goes to the footnote number six on the VSBA model, just, just take a look and that might, I think the language is the same and it's all bad. But I think if that helps, by putting definitions, it helps make that sentence more clear, because you can just say weapons versus whatever else. I don't know.
I thought we were trying to put instead a reference to the other policy.
Yeah, to the other policy. Absolutely. I'm just saying, it's not exactly the same. So pull both of them up while you're fixing it, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Okay. No, I'm good. So are we okay with that one? Andre, I'm not quite sure how to handle your issue. It's definitely a procedures issue. And of course, we don't approve procedures. But I think, I think somehow it should be noted and.
It was my understanding, when I said, sorry to interject, but that, I know we agreed not to discuss procedures because it would be clearly up to the superintendent or something. But we also acknowledge the need to discuss certain procedures with regards to the policies. And my understanding of student discipline was one of them that we would take a look at. Because for those of us that attended the VSBA conference last year, there's a disproportionate suspension rate. There's disproportionate also in regards to who's being suspended. I will bring out an example, of a personal example. My son decided he would not attend classes like he should. So what occurred? They gave him another, suspended him for a day. He's already cutting classes. Is that an appropriate response to individuals that are suspended? And that's my rationale behind this. But I also want to bring forth again, you cannot have two entities having the same violation but being disciplined by two separate entities.
So I, I don't feel that we're equipped to have that discussion.
I understand.
You have that information from some other work that you have done. Judy or Mark, do you have a recommendation about how to handle this discussion?
And I would defer to Judy just because we don't have.
High school athletes.
So much fun having a high school. So there's an Athletic Digest, for those of you who have had athletes go through. And I think that's what you're talking about, where the different standard is. And maybe it would be helpful, again, for this board to delve into the Athletic Digest a little bit to understand the purpose of it and the way those disciplinary pieces are managed with a, an advisory group. It's just a different process that might be helpful for you to just understand how it works.
Is all of this spelled out in the student handbook?
There's a student handbook and then there's an Athletic Digest. So it's in a companion document for athletes.
So I think sometime before our school starts, those two documents should come to us. I don't know that we need to take board time to discuss them. But I think if people see issues in them, they can send those issues to me and I can get them to Beth and get responses back to board members. Does that seem like a reasonable way? Okay. Brendan?
I just don't know the answer to the question. So is there, in fact, two separate disciplinary processes for athletes and general students?
Yes, there is.
There's a different, there's a different number of infractions. There's some different procedures that are enhanced. There's a different expectation for our athletes and.
But the base, there are two separate, they're not the same?
Right.
Okay. That's helpful.
Okay. Kim?
Just a, maybe a bigger question. How does this fit with things like restorative justice? And is that more procedural or is this language sort of, on its face, not creating space for it?
I really appreciate that question. I can speak for CCSU on this topic again. We spent quite a amount of time this last summer looking at our student handbook and changing some of the language in that, which went to immediately into one or two infractions and then suspension. There was a lot of suspending out. And so we know, just in the example that Andre shared, for us to reconsider that as a disciplinary action and think more through the processes of restorative justice. And there's an interest in moving in that direction. And we're bringing in, actually, next year, a restorative justice coach for the school. And they are going to be working on these documents. So part of me wanted to say, when you said bring the documents in, that work will be happening over the summer. So it'll be really in the beginning of the school year, that'll be refreshed. But we really want to form circles and instead of being exclusionary, work through the infraction in a way that's meaningful and there's a learning opportunity in that. And harm can be restored. So thank you for that comment, because I think that you'll see a lot of modification in the current handbook and the Athletic Digest for that matter.
I mean, how the superintendent, how Beth interprets this policy will really inform what procedures look like. And I would answer the question, I think this has, this is germane to all kids in all grades. And in the opening paragraph, the bulk of the policy addresses best practices relates to classroom management practices, I think would include restorative justice practices. And then there's the next section around students' responsibilities to understand, you know, their behavior and how that's impacted by others. That fits well with RJ.
Okay. So I think, in response to Kim's question, you're saying there's nothing in this policy that stands in the way of moving in the restorative justice direction and we're moving it. Okay. Anything else on this policy?
Are we going to pull it, say, as far as Keely look at it?
Well, we can decide. I almost think we can approve it at first reading with the understanding that there's going to be a modification to that one sentence that is, is going to go through Paul O'Brien.
We were in a.
I don't think we're changing. There's nothing in what Keely is suggesting that's changing the substance of the policy.
So we had a sort of a threaded conversation today, Keely and I and Al and Diane. Keely asked a good question. As a new member of the policy task team, you know, how does, how does this work? And one of the, we've taken a couple of quick steps. You know, we should have, when, when ideas come up, when edits, suggested edits come up at the table, we have it in all cases, going back as a policy task team, we sat down and looked at those. We sort of unilaterally just put those in place without discussion. And I think there have been some policies like weapons. The weapons, and we had, how many versions of that did we see? This might be one that we want to take, rather just put it on Keely's, you know, shoulders to do, have that discussion as a task team before we bring it back to the board. I would defer to the board chair out of respect, but I think that might be a good step going forward. Yeah.
So do you want to pull it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Search and seizure.
Compared with your suggestions.
Search and seizure. Brendan?
So I'm wondering if, under the search and seizure of students and student property, it refers to personal effects? Does that mean that the school has the ability to search a student's cellphone?
We have.
We do.
We do. Okay. And that's been deemed legal?
We've done it during due process when a parent wasn't in the room.
Yeah, okay.
Through voluntary permission to do so.
Brendan, in the, yeah, the footnotes to that policy, it actually talks about guidance to board members as to making sure that this is upfront in the handbook as to things about cars and personal, personal items and things. So that it is, that essentially, the student body is forewarned that the possibility exists that this could happen. So that, and that way, the board is covered as to legal processes, not there, et cetera, et cetera. And it's all written out in the policy footnotes to that, as to how the.
Does it refer to cell phones?
I don't recall it specifically. It does talk about searching cars.
So I, I think what it's always come down to for me, Brendan, is that students have little or no right to privacy.
Right.
If they come under suspicion.
Right.
And they're on school grounds.
Reasonable person.
I, I think that's the best way to think about it.
References computers, but I mean, we shouldn't just assume that that means personal held devices.
Yeah, I just feel like it needs to be updated to be clear. So that students, if the intention of, if part of the intention is the handbook, it contains the policies which inform the students. I think it's important in this day and age to include smartphones, which almost every student carries.
Yeah. Thanks for that. We'll check that out.
That's a, that's a good suggestion. Patrick?
Yeah, I would actually be curious about that. Because I, I mean, if I'm just reading this, and again, I'm obviously coming late, so I don't know if there's other policies that may have covered this. I mean, it seems to me that reading this, that it seems to be specific desk lockers, textbook computers, and other materials or supplies loaned by the school to students. But cell phones are personal property of an individual.
And that's covered in the next paragraph.
So are knives.
So I just think personal effects needs to be, it could be expanded.
A little more definition.
To have, to include smartphones in particular.
I agree.
It's.
So is that something that we feel comfortable had been done before second reading? Keely?
I think the middle paragraph.
I think the middle paragraph under the search and seizure section, the superintendent shall develop procedures, is implying that we'll take all the steps that would help students to not feel intimidated and deprived of their rights in this process, things like access to a parent or a lawyer or all of their constitutional rights. But you do hear in the news sometimes about schools strip searching someone who they thought had some ecstasy tabs or something, and I don't want that to happen to any student. Like, I'd see no reason for something like that to happen. I feel like we could probably say something that would help to allay parental concerns that their students will be unduly investigated without their presence or the student. You know.
I think, again, we're in an area that we would want some legal support, having been through workshops with attorneys who, who feel that we need teeth in a policy that allows administration to act unilaterally when they think there's harm to be happening with a child or against other people, and that we don't, due process is important, when they're in the schoolhouse, we have to act based on the information they have. Exactly. Yeah. But we'll, I think as a policy task team, again, it might be an opportunity to invite a legal lawyer to the conversation before we just make that assumption.
Should we pull that one too?
So I think we're pulling.
These are not mandated policies, by the way, but highly required.
Right.
Highly recommended.
Okay.
All in gratefully accepted.
Both of these policies, we'll go back for further discussion. If there's anything that comes to your mind after the meeting that hasn't been talked about tonight that you think the policy task team needs to consider, would you please get in touch with Diane?
Diane made a motion. Does she need to withdraw it for the minutes?
I made a motion. I, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Diane. No objection, I'll accept her withdrawal. Okay. So, yes.
Do you have one other item on the policies, upcoming policies? I've been in touch with Mark and at our last meeting, we discussed the need, and the administration has concurred, there is a need for a staff ethics and rules of conduct. It's typically referred to as G2A. It's last revised 2010. It has to do with establishing a bench, my interpretation, sort of professional conduct, expectations.
Excuse me. For the board's information, that, that policy is being worked through the system. Deb Anderson is walking things through, so you will see it once it's finished, his walkthrough.
Judy and I met with Deb today, and we have freshly minted copies for your perusal.
Okay. So, Al, so it's coming?
Modeled after the.
This is what you're telling.
Modeled after CCSU.
So it's modeled after G2A?
Yep. Exactly.
And what, when do we expect that back from?
When you guys meet, we'll bring it forward, the task team.
I had a comment about the first paragraph of the existing policy.
Well, let's discuss that in committee. How's that?
You're part of the task team, so you'll certainly have an opportunity to bring your ideas to the table there.
Well, it was for the administration.
Well, Mark will be at the task team meeting, right?
Yeah.
Right? Okay. So I expect you'll air your ideas at that point.
No, it's no problem.
Great. Thanks. So the next item is two emails that I've received, one from Fletcher and one from Fairfax. I did send you an email last night indicating that Judy, Mark and I will be meeting with Chris Leopold on Thursday to discuss these letters. The letters are asking for a conversation about merger. It has come to my attention after receiving the letters that districts who are applying for an alternate structure status have to make these overtures to neighboring districts. I can't say for certain that's what's happening, but it may be. So for tonight, what I'd like you to do is, if you have questions that you think we should ask Chris about these two requests, I'd like to jot them down so I can bring them up with Chris on Thursday.
What is an alternate structure and what does it mean to this board?
Well, an alternate structure doesn't really mean anything to this board, but for school districts who don't merge under Act 46, they can apply for alternate structures, meaning that they can make a case that they're not going to merge with another district. They have to provide a lot of evidence that they're meeting the goals of Act 46 without merging with another district. So Fairfax and Fletcher in Georgia were, did a study committee, and I think the correct term would be to say the study committee disbanded without a recommendation. So now they have no proposal on the table that meets the requirements of Act 46. So if you don't, then you can apply for alternative structure. I'll just take Stowe, for example. Stowe didn't want to merge with the other districts in its SU or with any other surrounding districts, so they're going to make a case to the state board that they should be left alone. And I don't know for sure what, where Fletcher and Fairfax are going, but in order to make that case for an alternative structure, you have to show that you have asked neighboring boards to have a conversation with you about merger.
Okay. Isn't, the follow-up question.
Yeah.
Isn't Fletcher a part of the supervisory union, the Franklin?
Yes. So they're, just, just quickly, they're struggling, if I may. They're all a part of Franklin West.
Okay. Now, what is the legal authority for a member of a supervisory union to come under Act 46? I mean, you're already part of a supervisory union.
Act 46 is not about supervisory unions. It's about merged districts. Most supervisory unions are merging into a single district. So Chittenden South, for instance, Williston, Heinsberg, Charlotte, they're Shelburne. They are now a single district. That meets the requirements of Act 46.
But just to clarify Al's question, does Fletcher Elementary School by itself have the ability to engage us in a conversation? Are they coming to us as a school or as a district?
They're coming to us as a school district. They are a school district.
Within the SU.
Within Franklin West SU.
As Westford was within the CCSU.
If, I'm not suggesting it'll bear fruition, but if it does bear fruition and then they come in, will that, in essence, enable all the caveats of what we have now that they have to follow, but with the fact that we now have two high schools, that'll open up to a high school choice?
Well, I'm quite sure I'm right about this, but it will be one of my questions for Chris. If we were to entertain a conversation with either or both of these school districts, it would require a new study committee.
A new study committee.
I'm just going to go around the table. Brenton, Patrick, Brenton.
I think, well, one of the questions I have for Chris is, but maybe this is answered by, if we do have to form a new study committee, the communities ultimately, including Westford, Essex Junction, Essex Town, would have to vote to accept these districts into our unified district.
Right. Yeah. It would be like starting all over where we started in March of 2050.
But we've already made the case, why would we need to make the case again through a study committee?
Yeah, why do we need a study committee? That doesn't make any sense.
We would. To bring either or both of these districts to become part of a unified union with us, you have to go through the study committee process. I'm quite sure that's right. All right. I've got Patrick, Martha, Diane and Keely.
I don't want to bring them to ask my question.
Okay. Martha.
I, just when you're talking with Chris, when we did the RED study, we had literature that we had that there was optimum size districts. And so I would be curious the numbers that are in each of those districts and what that would put us up to. And also I'd be curious the distances that kids are having to be transported. And, and what the state wants to see for transportation, time that kids are seated on a bus.
Okay. Diane?
I would like to have the question, why do they think we are a good match to merge with?
So, so.
I recognize it's a study question, okay? But I guess preliminarily I'd like to know, because they've opened this avenue by addressing these emails to us. So I guess I would preliminarily like to know that question.
So my read, Diane, and this is just my read. My read is that they're meeting a requirement.
I recognize that we're being used, okay? Okay. So, okay, I'll be upfront. Okay, I've read their information. It was very interesting to understand about the three communities, okay? But I feel that we are being utilized for their means, not ours.
So we are a neighboring district. I think that's the answer to your question.
Okay.
Okay. Keely?
Just as a diversion for a moment, I love the beginning of the, like, Oedipus Rex, because it starts, they walk onto stage and there's a, there's a altar, and they say, "We pray to you, Lord Apollo, because you're the nearest." Quite a start. Things don't end up very well. My one legal question would be, like, we didn't merge across any county lines, does that change things? Because they might be in a different region or something for school year and all that stuff. And just a philosophical question, personally, I think, like, larger districts is great, but as we've gone through this merger process, we've been working as kind of equal partners. Westford and Essex Junction had been working together for decades. We had a very clear understanding of what the needs of those different communities were and how they work. Essex Town, meshing with the different work styles has been a challenge, but presumably once we become a district, if something like Fletcher, which is a tiny one school, wants to join us, presumably the idea is that they like what we've got and they want to come participate in that, that our approach to doing business is what they want to join. And I'd kind of like to know if that's the idea of how adding random little orphan districts to larger unified unions is supposed to look in the future? Because that doesn't sound to me like a study committee process where we have to meld our vision with Fletcher Elementary School.
Well, and, you know, my first reaction with Fletcher was to write back to the chair of the board and say, "I assume you know this, but if you, they have school choice, grade seven through 12." And I said, "I assume you know, if you were to merge with us, that you would have to give that up." And she said, "Yes, the board knows that, and many people in town would be very unhappy to have that happen." But this was all before I realized that a requirement of applying for an alternate structure is to write these letters to neighboring districts.
Your boilerplate matching on Fairfax.
I love sitting next to you.
Way of asking her question. Would we have to go through a study committee if they petitioned to join us after July 1st?
Yeah. The only way I think that, the only way another district can join us and not have to go through a study committee process, I think, is if the secretary assigned them to our district in the statewide plan.
For not merging.
But that's not happening till, like, 2020 or something.
Doesn't BFA have their own technical center?
No.
No? So I've got the districts confused. Okay. And what is the tech center?
St. Albans.
St. Albans Tech Center is what it's called?
Yes. It's BFA St. Albans.
It's the Northwest.
BFA St. Albans.
Okay. So I was thinking.
Kim?
So I think these are all great questions, but I wonder if before we spend too much time or money on Chris regarding these questions, we should take the temperature of our board regarding interest in this, because I don't think that we can be forced to be merged with them if this were to go to the statewide plan. So I just, unless we have genuine curiosity around whether or not this might be a great idea to expand our transportation network and our offerings at multiple levels.
People could just keep going to their same schools.
Yeah. No, I, I guess I'm just trying to, to your point regarding cultural differences, there was a natural connection regarding all three of our communities. We shared a high school, we shared CCSU as an SU. It was a natural worthwhile investment and endeavor. And I just think, I don't expect it to take a lot of time for Chris to answer our questions, but before their need to satisfy their requirements becomes our expense, I think it's worth considering our interest in this as a board. And I don't know if that's a, just a thumbs up, thumbs down, consensus, how curious are we really? I'm not, I defer to you on that, Martha, but I just don't want us to waste a lot of time on it.
Well, I agree with that. I think the reason I, when Judy suggested that meeting with Chris, the reason I agreed was I just wanted to make sure that there's not something I'm missing, you know, that I am not aware of that should be considered in this discussion.
I want to make sure that there isn't something that can legally make us have to consider this. There, there might be.
We already satisfied the state requirements under Act 46. I don't think we can be forced to take them.
The town would have to vote, it would be, I would think.
Yeah. No, I, I, from everything, I recall having read, when I read more closely and more carefully Act 46, I can't think of anything that would have them being assigned to us.
I still think we should have that answered.
They could be assigned to their own SU, and that's the study committee that fell apart, I think. Right? They didn't even take it to.
They aren't going to be able to do that, though, either, because Act 46 guarantees that you can't be forced to give up choice. And Georgia has high school choice, and Fletcher has seven through eight choice, and they And Fairfax has no choice, so it isn't going to be simple. So I think it doesn't hurt to take the temperature of the Board, so I can bring that to Chris as well. And maybe, having had maybe the most time to think about this, I'll just start by saying, I think we've got enough on our plate. Merging these two districts is unlike anything else that's going on in the state. And frankly, I, I can't see any advantage to taking on anything else, even a preliminary conversation. So, does, let's just put it this way, does anybody have an opinion that differs from that?
Well, I guess if you, if you want to pursue it, take a look at their school teacher ratios, performance. It's concerning.
No interest.
No interest.
We are already neck and neck with the burling to the CBU on size. And so I think we probably are at our optimal.
I don't have an interest, but I think we need to ask some of those questions. For a legal opinion, but.
Okay, but I think that, I think that helps. And I think Chris can help us with how to write the response. It should be a pretty short meeting. Brendan?
I guess my, I'm not as, I guess, opposed, I'm not as opposed as others to hearing the case. Because I'm assuming at some point in the future, these two schools could be, districts could be assigned to our district.
I'll ask Chris. I think it's unlikely. I think they can't be assigned unless we say yes, is the way the law reads. But they have put some money on the table that if you accept one of these orphan districts, you get ten thousand dollars to bring them on or something. That's, yeah, that's, that's. I think that's what's in a twenty-two. So that's proposed.
That's a lot of.
All right, well, I'll explore this and we'll take formal action at the next meeting.
This is off the track a little bit, but given that Georgia's part of that SU, why aren't they approaching as well? I mean, you got two out of three.
They may not geographically touch us.
No, but they would if Fairfax did, then it'd be like.
Right, but I think they don't.
All I can think of is a new superintendent, a new COO. And then we would be studying something like this, I just can't, boggles the mind.
All right, that's my phone.
I think he's more opposed now.
He loves study committees.
Okay, test team updates, communications.
Judy, can you put that artwork up?
It's also over there.
Yeah, it's here too, but that's far away.
And we've all seen it on Facebook.
You've all hopefully all seen it. I wanted to remind everyone here and also our viewing audience of the event on Saturday night that Senior at Essex High School is hosting and Voices for Education is supporting. There it is, and Henry, there it is, there it is, it's all over and Facebook too. We've had twenty-five hundred views of this and I think it's because of the artwork. And, and Henry has been extremely thoughtful in, in the agenda and putting this together. So Voices Group has been working very closely with Henry on this event and I hope you all can come and invite your friends and family to participate. The other update for communications is about the Voices Group. And we have been meeting regularly and the group would like to have Board permission to have a Facebook page specifically for Voices. The, the conversation about a, a Facebook page for the new district is one that I hope that Patrick and I will have when we finally get to sit down and we're in a meeting for ourselves. But for tonight, I was wondering if it, if it would be possible to give thumbs up for the Voices Group to have a Facebook page. That's the question.
Judy, Mark, I guess I turn to you. Can you think of any challenges or things that we should consider?
That's a good question for Vince and his team.
I would offer a pitch. It came to our discussion, I think it was one of the meetings that I was able to attend, that it would allow for the opportunity to create events and let people say they're going and then share. And so it, and it would not have to be managed by, it would be managed by the Voices for Education Group, not by Vince.
It would be set up, set up by the group and managed by the group. Independent of the, of the resources at Central Office.
As a matter of fact, I think Dawn Hill Flurry said that she was going to help with.
Right, and we have people on our committee who.
Knowing that there would be, you know, if there's activity, that there's responsiveness happening within the.
Right, now the Voices work is kind of embedded in the, in the EWSD website. It's kind of hard to find the information and for things like this, and certainly in the spring and in the fall as we really start to have more engagement opportunities, our group feels like it would be a really good means to get that out in the community. And it does, and it won't require Vince or what we would.
I guess, you're right, now there are no more, but we also have a communications PR director and we need to make sure that at least Ben is aware.
Well, he was in the meeting today with me wanting this to happen. So he, he was not going to take it on himself, obviously, without Board approval, but.
Keely?
I think it sounds like a great idea as long as there's like an intentional approach before it goes live about, you know, to what extent do we want the public to be able to post and comment before there's moderation on the page? I mean, I know a lot of pages, like, only the page can post, but people can comment. And just like who in the group is taking responsibility for that. As long as you have all those ducks in the row, I think it sounds great.
Yeah, hi. My only hesitation is I'm, I'm not sure what questions I should be thinking about, you know.
Those are some of the good questions Keely just had.
I guess I would just raise, I'm lukewarm about it. I think that, for me, I just worry a little bit that the more that Voices for Education develops its own public persona or brand, it could develop some, there could be some confusion about who they are and if they represent the Board or not. So, I mean, I know we have plenty of Board representation on the group and I know that the whole point of Voices for Education is to engage with the public on behalf of the Board. I just want to raise that as a potential point of attention.
And I would just, in response to that, part of the reason for doing that is to clarify that very thing. Because as you know, the document that this Board approved of the roles and responsibilities of that group would be housed in that page so people could see what that relationship is on that page.
Why aren't we using Ben Dickey? I mean, you know, that's his responsibility, is the way I understood it.
First of all, we don't use Ben Dickey. Ben has been, Ben has been an absolute treasure for us and he's at every meeting and he's doing all of our communication and the meeting I was in with him today. He doesn't have the authority to, he needs the permission of the Board and the administration before he would ever create a Facebook page on behalf of the Voices Group. If the, if this is permitted by the Board, he would certainly have a hand in, in moderating and in being in his role as the point person for the Voices Group and also in his role. But he would never take, he would never say, "I'll go do that" without having this proper, going through these proper channels.
Andre and then Martha.
Not entirely familiar with the work, but with the Voices, would there be an expectation if the community engaged that they would bring about change through their only, their discussion on the media? Or would it somehow affect the change for the administration to see what, what is really going on and where the concerns are?
So I think that the, the idea is to, again, the work of the Voices Group is to frame the engagement initiatives over the next several years around giving the community a voice in the things that they want to have a voice in that are within the parameters, obviously.
Within their purview.
Within their purview, exactly. This is a vehicle to, to help, to have the community weigh in to a certain degree. I think Keely's point is well taken. We can't start a stream of things and have expectations. It needs to be moderated and set up in a way that makes sense. However, I do think that the work of this group is to have a, have a finger on the pulse of what the community is feeling and what they want to be informed about. And to that end, I think this makes sense to move in that direction.
It could add as a vehicle to bring awareness of what is lacking in the community.
It all, right, and it also would be another way to, it would be a link back to the, to the EWSD page. Because everything would be then sent for the, for the official information is going to be disseminated from the district. This group is just going to be talking about this engagement work and not about, just certainly has no decision-making authority. That was very clear in when we spelled out the roles and responsibility of this group. This group has no authority to make decisions. It can only make recommendations to this Board.
Liz, would it compromise your work in any way? If we made a final decision about this in two weeks? I, I just think it's, it's a lot to ask us to, to hear it tonight and make a decision tonight. Okay, Martha.
One, I guess I get very, very confused, all these different things going on in our communities. So we've got the Nellie Grant going and Voices of Education came through the Nellie Grant.
That's correct.
Okay, so the Voices for Education.
Voices for Education is Nellie May, it's just we gave ourselves a new title, so we.
Okay, so Nellie is Voices for Education?
Correct.
Now, so you have grant funding?
Correct.
So you're going to pay for your own Facebook?
Correct.
Okay, so are you paying for, if Ben Dickey's going to be doing a piece of this, is he going to get reimbursed or our school district reimbursed for using his expertise?
Ben gets paid through the grant, so he is our point person and in the grant he gets paid. Last year we paid, he got paid a thousand dollars, this year we raised that to fifteen hundred dollars. Which, so he is paid to do the work that we do and we're very, he, he's very, it's been a really good working relationship.
So.
And any cost for flyers that get printed or anything that goes out in the world comes from the grant, not from the district.
Okay, so how is his time separated for that versus what we need for like that April twelfth issue that happened? I mean, this district, we're paying him to really be doing the things this EWSD needs done. So how much more is this going to grow? How much more can he be expected to do?
I'll just share that the committee includes like Erin McGuire as well. And she's paid by the district to be the special ed, one of the special ed directors. There's a couple of Board members, there's a couple of community members. And, and Ben is there and he, he is the only paid member of the group for his sort of facilitation or, or support that he provides to the work. So it is sort of an interesting dynamic of how this exists. But I, it is hard to sort of extricate what part of being a PR director and having your pulse on what's going on around people's interest in having voice in education. It would be very hard to separate that, so I'm not, I don't, you would know better than I.
Well, and Judy would know what Ben does. His work, I mean, in my humble opinion, that he does for the district is absolutely foremost in his day-to-day. And what he does for our group is above and beyond. He's not sacrificing the work that he does with the district in order to do the Voices work. He works extra. And we'll make a, I'll tell our group that we, that the Board is thinking about it and we will make a decision. In the meantime, come to this. I'll post it on my own personal page in the meantime.
SXCTV and all the other great avenues.
If you think of further questions about this concept of the Facebook page for Voices, please send them to me and I'll feed them through to Liz and Judy and Mark.
I think the Vince Ganillo piece is also very.
That Facebook. Has nothing to do with any of that.
Vince has nothing to do with it, none of it.
None of it.
Nope.
And Facebook is free.
Right.
Yeah, but I just think there's a lot to think about when you use Facebook. And I think Keely and Brendan and you and Liz know far more than I do. I just, I just don't want us to get into a situation we don't want to be in. My initial reaction is, yeah, the more communication, the better. But there's something about, something about it that makes me feel cautious. Okay, Brendan, Transportation Subcommittee.
So since we last met as a Board, we had a community engagement session about transportation. Many of you were there and many of you helped organize it. We had over sixty people from the community attend and we had a very, I thought, sort of my take of the event was that it was a really productive discussion. It was, people were reasonable, rational, curious. And I thought the communication was very effective back and forth between the members of the community and the members of the Board and the administration that were there, sort of explaining sort of what we know and where we're going. There's a whole document which I can share with the Board that summarizes the feedback that we received. Nothing unexpected or shocking. It was great to have representatives of the transportation companies there as well as Gary.
Marcrus.
Marcrus. Marcrus, who is our transportation coordinator and consultant. And I think people really sort of valued their presence at the meeting so that they could hear directly from members of the community. Lots of good conversation, lots of, sort of like, don't forget about this or, you know, how the heck are we going to handle Summit in Fleming? I mean, so there was lots of great discussion. I think that the, the big takeaway for me is that communicate, 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 communicate is going to have to be the name of the game when it comes to transportation, especially with residents in the junction. So in a quick meeting that we had with the transportation folks after the meeting, they, they feel very positive that they'll be able to get some draft routes going and we expect to see those in the next few weeks. We're talking about how to best engage principals next and get their feedback about the very sort of tactical, on-the-ground things that they want us to know about as we start this work. I was encouraged to think about the fact that we need to produce minutes for that meeting that we had. So that'll be something I will do tomorrow. But that fell off my radar a little bit since I was very focused on engaging the community and not necessarily taking minutes for, like, excuse me. So that's the, that's the broad overview. If folks missed the event, you can see the slides at the EWSD website that we used to sort of present the information to the community. And also the full FAQ document is also at the website as well.
Kim, Martha.
I thought it was awesome, thank you very much for doing it. And with respect to the minutes, since there was no action item, to what extent?
It was a warm, it was a warm Subcommittee meeting, so how she has to have the boiler, the standard boilerplate.
Ended it and here are the slides.
Yeah, I can mainly point to the resources that we used.
Right, Martha.
Did you have a break? Did you have a breakdown of how many people showed up from Westford, the town versus the village?
There was a rough head count that was going on, I think, but we didn't have specifics.
I would say all three communities were represented.
Yeah, we definitely heard, you know, we heard from people from all three communities. I don't have specific numbers.
But you also had people who teach in the town and live in the junction, and their kids walk to school in the junction, you know. You had stuff like that.
It just reminded me again of the Red Study Committee in some respects, in the fact that if you can sort of alleviate people's initial questions, it causes people to be just a lot more sort of calm about the topic. And repeating the answers to those common questions again and again and again is very frustrating, but I think necessary. So through the course of this, so as one example, at the beginning of the meeting, I was engaged with someone who, from the junction, who was telling me that the only reason he moved to the junction was to not live in a community where there was busing. I was interested, fascinated me, so I wanted to know more. So we had a conversation. So it was very sort of like touch and go, sort of his communication with me was sort of at the side of his eye, looking at me, looking at- And then during the presentation, he asked a question about whether or not his child would be required to ride the bus. And the answer was no. And then toward the end of the meeting, he had a question about, well, will bus routes, will bus routes be changed, sorry?
Will the school be-
Will the school assignments be changed to accommodate bus routes? So in other words, would his kid be forced to go to a different school? And the answer was no, for now.
For now.
Well, I mean, the answer is no. And I can't predict the future, right? But it was very interesting to me how, at the very beginning of that meeting, he was very oppositional in his communication with me. And by working through some of his main concerns over the course of the evening, we had a very positive and productive discussion at the end of the meeting. So I think that's what it did for a lot of people, is that a lot of people who came, they had, they came with their one sort of key concern. And through the course of the evening, I think the majority of the people had those key concerns at least addressed. Even if they didn't necessarily like the answer, they at least knew that their concern was understood.
We did a post, a survey out to the group after, and we did, we got about fifteen responses, which wasn't a ton, but we got rated all good or excellent, and most people were really appreciative of all of the board members, administrators, bus, the bus companies, all of the people in the know who were in the room. It was really well appreciated by the community.
So my biggest takeaway was, the sooner we can finalize the bus routes and get them to people, the better. And if there was an opportunity to create bus routes and meet with people and get feedback about them, I'm not sure that's a great idea, but people would really like that. And I think one of the expectations or desires that we're probably not going to be able to meet for everyone is people don't want their children on the bus for a long period of time. And it's very hard to balance the costs with the time.
Although I will say that one survey comment was, I want the longer bus ride because I don't have to pay for childcare when my kid is on the bus. I hadn't thought about that.
Sorry.
And I will say that a lot of the format of the meeting, I heard in, through surveys and in the room itself, that there were a lot of people saying, I hadn't thought about that. And so what it did in that evening was allow people to think about things that they hadn't thought about. And that was our big goal for the night, is getting away from my kid and getting into our kids. And I think this was a good step towards that.
I agree. Marla?
Question, a couple of questions from that, and I'm not sure it's the Transportation Subcommittee, but in reading the Essex Reporter, it was interesting that the gentleman that's going to be doing and deciding the routes in the junction, the problem is going to be getting bus drivers. So how soon will we know? I mean, when do we have to make a decision as a district? Let's say they can only find five bus drivers for routes in the junction versus how many in Westford. When do we, in the contract, are able to say, okay, we're not paying for those other buses or routes? Because I'm assuming they're going to order the buses. And we're going to be stuck pretty soon, right?
Well, there's a clause in the contract that says school board members actually have to start driving.
Our teenagers need work, right?
Actually, I was going to tell my husband to quit working at the fairgrounds and start driving bus.
So that might, that might become a reality, Marla, and I think the planning team, because it'll be a group of people who look at drafting the first set of routes, I think we have to have a Plan A, B, C, D. And for those kiddos who live furthest away from the schoolhouse, obviously, in the village will be probably the first ones on the bus. If we only have five drivers and we need seven, that's going to be a reality that we'll have to bake into the overall design. But that is, that is a real concern. Statewide, it's a real concern. Yeah.
We've lived through it.
We've lived through it, yeah. The other piece, Brendan, is we're thankful to have Captain George Murdy there. I think his eyes opened as well, and I think I saw a jaw drop as well at the same time. But it's going to be important that we, as we look at the technical aspects of it, that we have SXPD, because he heard things that he hadn't even thought of before. And I think we have to be message, our message going out and be reassuring the public, and the police support us too, that what we've put together is plausible. And he had some questions about traffic volume, and especially at the Five Corners. So I think it's important to have, at some point, bring SXPD in the planning phase of the work.
And at Summit and Fleming.
Exactly. Mostly those two buildings, I think, right?
And towards that end, the PC was extraordinarily generous at their last meeting, gave me access to any funds that were necessary to explore anything that was needed in the district moving forward. So we were able to authorize Creighton and Lansing, that are a discipline, an engineer group that works out of Colchester, to look at designing like an island in front of ADL so that there can be safe drop-off there, and assessing Fleming and Summit as well. And we have been talking with EPD as well. So, you know, there'll be some eyes on it by experts to be able to make sure, that's what I was talking about at my table, that whatever we design, it'll be safe. You know, that's definitely a first priority too. So, you know, as soon as we get that information about how to drop off. And the other thing to remind everyone is that we already do drop off and pick up at Summit and Fleming for special education needs and for EJRP, for after-school care. So there is, there is transport, bus transport and drop-off now. So it's not this total foreign concept. And I think just thinking through more about directionality and having those experts that know that, that will be very helpful.
We'll give you that information so you can continue to provide it.
Yeah, I mean, I think what's going to happen over the next four to six weeks is some of the good work in terms of designing the routes and figuring out some of these other issues, so that we can think about what our next engagement will be with the community.
What, what is the update on construction on the roads in the junction? I'm worried about for the start of school that-
The end of school.
I had to walk a third of a mile to pick up my son. I couldn't get there in time. I was just abandoned in the car.
So I don't think we want to have that discussion. We just want to be assured that that's on people's record.
Oh, yes.
Do we need a conversation with the village trustees?
They'll take care of it.
They'll take care of it.
Oh, Judy does that?
Mark and Judy will take care of it. Okay, is there anything else we, oh, Keely, sorry.
One last thing about transportation while we're talking about the police. The main thing I learned from the meeting is that apparently no one follows the law about stopping for school buses. And I hope we'll be able to involve public safety as we do the first day of school or drive runs to start educating our community's drivers about how to behave around school buses.
The bus drivers who were at the meeting were pretty peeved about Petso.
Yeah, they were, they really were.
I don't think I've ever talked to a bus driver who wasn't, and I don't think it's that it's that many, but what happens is scary.
Absolutely.
But people aren't used to seeing a lot of school buses in Essex Junction, and-
That's true. Right. They must be dry. But that's, that's, that's a good point, that there should be some public education.
I mean, there's not a sign out on public buses, so people do drive around public buses.
Right.
But that's different.
No, it's totally different. I get it. But I think to Keely's point, they're not used to seeing buses. So that's actually a great thing to think about, engaging maybe Colin at the Essex Reporter.
Honestly, do I both stage right or do I-
Front page, the signs with the stop thing.
What does a stop sign mean?
But tell them, get it, when they have to take the bus because they've lost their license.
Okay, ready to move on? Diane, do you need to say anything else about policy?
Then Mark and I will schedule our next, our next policy meeting.
Totally.
Totally. Yes.
And Marla and I just set up our first meeting today on superintendent evaluation. And it'll be two weeks from tonight. So we'll be reviewing what CCSU has done and what Essex Town has done. And then we'll be having a conversation with Beth, and hopefully at some point, we'll be able to bring some ideas to the board.
Just one other thought of another resource potentially is Dan French.
Oh, true.
And his, even his St. Mike's hat, maybe.
Okay.
I also had told Martha we've got Beth Cobb herself. What does her district do currently? And is she happy with the way they evaluate? I mean, seeing as she's going to be the one here, and we'll be discussing it with her, so.
Yep. Okay, local board and statewide updates. Any local board updates?
I know the PC, Judy mentioned how generous we were, the PC. There was a piece, there's a couple of things that we have given Judy permission to look at, at our schools and get the funds expended now. They are more like security or safety issues. So there might be some items that come off of our capital plan where money can be expended differently. So we'll have a better handle on that probably by the end of June.
You have to expend those funds before the end of June. Andre?
For Westford, we're continuing to hold joint meetings with the land.
For this level?
And we've actually making, I think, significant progress from where we originally started, from lease conception to now an easement conception. And instead of limiting it to parcel two, there's a possibility we may also pick up more discussion regarding easement on parcel three, which is behind the school directly. We're also making progress on granting easements to the town because of the generator, and it is the meeting place for special events, et cetera. So we're making good progress.
I'd say he, it was a big breakthrough when he learned that the use, the use agreements we create can extend school policy on to parcels two and three that are open by the town when they're being used for school activities. So that gives us a lot of comfort. So the, probably the toughest discussion is what about guns? And you can't discharge a weapon within a thousand feet of school property? Well, a thousand feet doesn't extend across all of Parcels Two and Three. So the town's going to have to decide what to do about that. They have two choices. They can post the land, or they can create an ordinance.
Because I think wasn't it what came out was that on public land, you can be limited from discharging, but not limited that you can carry.
Right.
Why carry if you're not going to discharge?
To get, to get your, to get your, to somewhere else.
Off of the properties altogether as an access point to something past three.
Can't restrict the conveyance of it, but you can restrict the discharging.
Right. But the important part for us is that our policies during school hours and during school activities can, in our use agreements, extend to those parcels, which is what is the most important for student safety. Statewide updates, the language that, oh, Al?
Just a point of order, there was an important U-46 meeting.
Oh, sorry.
In which funds were transferred, remember? The bleacher?
Yes.
I thought we, didn't we already talk about that?
Did we?
I thought we did at the last meeting. We haven't met since-
Two weeks ago.
So the U-46 Board's going to meet, all the board, all the local-
On May twenty-second.
On May twenty-second, and you'll actually approve the bill.
Yeah, at that meeting.
Yeah. But I guess to your point, it's a $250,000 expenditure that's in, I believe it's your 2019 or 2020 capital plan. So the U-46 Board is taking care of that expense at this time, so you can have some flexibility with what you're going to need going forward with your school's capital plan. That's an important point.
So that's good, but we also need to remember that our budget this year has a pretty healthy revenue from fund balances. So whatever money that is spent in our local budgets that doesn't become part of fund balance isn't going to be a revenue in a future budget, which, so we just need to remember that there's two sides to that coin. I'm glad, which is not to say I'm not glad that things are going forward. I think, I think that's really helpful.
It's a riser.
Security. It's good for students. Anything else, sorry, Al, anything else on local boards? All right, statewide, the language that we requested, that we thought around Unifag unions filling vacancies and electing school board members, that we thought the Senate was putting in their bill, and it didn't, was unanimously approved by House Education. It was on the floor today for action. I don't know the results yet. So it seems like that's still moving forward. The thing that's been in the news a lot has been teacher healthcare. Some of us have individually communicated with legislators, but this board hadn't taken a position. So any communication that I've done, I've been very clear that I'm communicating as a person and not as a board member. So, questions? Brendan?
Do you have a sense on whether there's momentum or not behind that?
I think that it's a politically challenging situation. I think people are caught between recognizing that in many ways it's a one-time opportunity and the fact that it's happening at a point in session when there isn't really time to have the level of discussion that the topic deserves. So the Senate got around it by substituting a study committee. I'm not sure how helpful that is, because once people have negotiated their own individual ways of doing healthcare over different lengths of time, I don't think it's going to be possible. I don't think it's going to be possible to do it on a statewide basis. I read just before I came here on the Channel Three website that there was some discussion in the House about Hoot trying to find a way to capture whatever money might be saved locally, but not have a statewide negotiation, which sounds like the worst of all possible worlds to me. But I don't, you know, that was just a two-sentence piece on the Channel Three website. So I need a lot more details before I could understand exactly what that means. So, uh, to be determined. Okay. Anything else on statewide? Nope. So Chief Operating Officer, Judy has some good news for us, I think.
Good news. I know you've been waiting for four months.
For good news?
For good news. Um, I'm pleased to announce that, um, Brian Donahue will be, um, taking on the role of Chief, uh, Operating Officer for the new Essex-Westford School District.
Remember Liz?
Yay!
Wasn't either one told you?
He will be leaving VPR in June after 11 years of service to public broadcasting.
Forewritten.
Someday Brendan Keneal will talk to me again. Just to review the process a little bit. Um, we established essential critical characteristic traits and skills that were desired for the position, reviewed school spring applications, created screening criteria and questions, interviewed four candidates and checked references. Uh, the screening committee and interview committee members consisted of the new superintendent, Beth Cobb, um, Martha Heath as the board chair, Bruce Murdo as Chief of Operations, no, I'm sorry, as Property Services Director, Bob Clifford as Child Nutrition Service Director, Kathy Baron as Finance Director, and Deb Anderson, Human Resources, Paul O'Brien, Legal Service, Kevin Briggs as a principal, and Dylan McNamara as Special Ed Director, and Ben, Ben Dickey as Communications Coordinator, and myself. Um, just briefly to, for those of you who aren't familiar with Brian, I think he's exactly the kind of leader that this system will need as you transition. Uh, he's lived in both Essex Town and the Junction, and his four children have all been educated in ET and CCSU schools. He knows the educational system in many roles as a parent, a community member, a taxpayer, and the former CFO, COO of CCSU. He has longstanding relationships with internal directors and administrators as well as community partners, such as architects and safety response personnel. There will be many projects that lie ahead that Brian is specifically suited for and will bring not only the expertise, but also the intentions of the new district to develop the unified purpose. Um, I just say that he has, what I'm excited about is, um, during our succession planning, leaving someone who has historic and institutional knowledge of both of our systems through his six years of employment with CCSU and his student's education at ET. Uh, he's also served on the Union High School, Union 46 Board since 2009, and for the past five years has served as Chair. Um, many of you might remember Brian as being instrumental in the One Campus Plan, which included the Center for Technology, uh, building improvements in Essex High School renovations, and skating rink facility betterments, which was an estimated project of $12.5 million. And he was able to secure $3 million in construction aid from the state to support that effort. Um, that was approved by both Essex Town and Essex Junction a little more than a decade ago. And, uh, he stayed true to his three promises or purposes that it would enhance student opportunities. And if you haven't had a chance to go through our tech center, I highly recommend you tour that facility. Um, it addressed immediate instructional needs, um, and it preserved a valuable community asset of the rink and enhanced the value. In Brian's words, um, change is hard, but this new adventure with the Essex-Westford School District is an amazing opportunity for me to serve my community. The unification of school districts has been something I've been working on in Essex for nearly 15 years. First as a district administrator and more recently as an elected school board member. With this opportunity, I have a chance to be there at the very beginning and make a difference in how 3,500 students experience education each and every day. So we have hired an exceptional person to support. And on that note...
Keely.
Does that mean that U-46 needs another member for its board? Or is it, because they're not operating schools, it's not a...
Well, he's still, he still is on the board. And, oh, no, he can't be.
Right. He's not hired until...
He's starting.
Okay. So, um, I'm going to be working with the SU Board on May 22nd because we need to reorganize. And also to inform them, after doing some, uh, review of, uh, finances, uh, to, his available may be as early as June 1st. So if that's the case, we'll have some transition period, um, and also using some of the funds from the vacant position, but we've also been using those funds, uh, for the work that our consultant, Marilyn Frederick, has been providing. Um, so he would come in and he would have to resign his position on the U-46 Board, um, because he couldn't serve in both capacities. And I anticipate, you know, that maybe there's three or four meetings remaining at most. Um, so he'll probably resign at that meeting. Um, Liz has already been, at the last meeting, appointed as Chair and, um, will serve on CCSU Board as well in that capacity. So we, you know, I'm a little bit torn about filling the position for, especially because we have five... I wouldn't imagine we have to.
I don't think, do we have to?
I have to check into it.
You have a quorum.
We have five. So it's, uh, he, it's an open village seat, um, on that board. And so we would just, I'm going to check with Chris when we meet with him.
Yeah. I mean, Bud's turned to you who advertised it and interviewed people.
I know.
Although, although, I was thinking its work would end on June 30th, but it doesn't.
Right.
So you probably do need to fill.
I do. I think that, you know, a previous board member from any board...
For example?
Um, yeah. There's all kinds of ways to manage it.
If he's interested.
Yeah. Also, you know, somehow we forgot to put in, uh, just to give you an update as well, you have, oh, this is other good news. I just went through the budget with Kathy Baron today because I thought this question would come up. We still have $45,000 remaining.
Only two months to go.
Our transition plan.
So some of that funds, those funds are available under Professional Services for the, um, Gary Marquis work of that consultant moving forward. And, uh, the remainder for Legal Services. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else that the two of you wanted to bring up tonight? That was the big one. Okay. Um, board agenda for the 16th. We know we have policies. Brendan?
Enough of the 16th, but I, I did receive an email from Tom at the Vermont Department of Health who is interested in presenting to the board their final report sometime in June or later. So I just wanted to put that out there now, uh, that he's requested time with this board in June or July.
Okay.
How early in June do you think he might be available? Just thinking about, we typically don't meet in July. We may very well be meeting in July, but we don't. And if it were to be information, it would be beneficial before the announcement of the traffic patterns and bus routes.
Um, I could certainly suggest the earlier meeting in June.
That would be good.
That is something that was...
Let's see if he can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't know that date.
So the first Tuesday, what I've heard is, um...
So is the Voices, uh, action item for the next meeting?
June 6th.
June 6th. Okay, thanks.
Martha, I'm going to be bringing forward, um, I floated an RFP for a tan line of credit, um, so that you'll have that, um, waiting for the banks to respond. So I'll have a recommendation, uh, for your credit line that'll need approval.
Anything else outside of the ordinary topics?
We won't be ready to talk superintendent eval yet. Because we're just going to be early meeting. Are we going to have any update on negotiations? Any movement?
By the way, well, we have, we had a break last week. It was such a treat, Judy and...
Wasn't it? I haven't eaten since.
I've spent so much time together. I'm sure we've eaten more meals together than I've had meals with my family and Judy with hers in ages. So this past week was a vacation for everybody, so we had a break. Um, so I would imagine we've got two meetings coming up this week and a couple more planned, probably the following week, I can't recall, but I'm sure we do. Um, and so I would suspect by the next meeting, we'll have something to share.
Okay. There, there is a deadline today, uh, the 5th of May, um, for all of our teachers to return their contracts. So we might have, um, you know, some openings to announce, possibly.
We're meeting with Beth, um, on Monday, the four of us, to start talking about the components of a transition plan for Beth. And so we may be prepared to share sort of draft, our draft thinking about what that might look like. Martha, I defer to you, but, um, just to keep you apprised that things are happening and she's, she's getting involved. On May 8th, our regular, our bi-weekly planning meeting, yeah.
Oh.
You're bringing breakfast.
I'm glad you don't. Okay. Great. Anything else?
Let's stay there.
All right. Let's do our three takeaways from tonight.
Patrick's, that's Patrick's new job.
That's right. So I would say that...
I got my first one published.
Yeah.
Big moment.
So I think the debrief on the, um, April 12th incident at Essex High School.
The new COO.
The new COO, yes. I think that's...
So the April 12th presentation, what was the other one?
The new COO. Do we have a third? I don't know that we do.
I think two is good.
Those are two big ones.
Those are two big ones.
Those are two big ones.
There you go. It can look like three.
I think that's good. Anything else? All right. Thank you all very much. I'll see you in two weeks.